Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, June 4th, 2020. Welcome to everyone who's joining us from home, and all the staff for joining us from remote locations. We will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please be seated. Can you have your roll call, please?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Gudella?
Here.
Mr. Stern?
Here.
Thank you. For a moment of silence this evening, like it's something special. As we meet here this evening, our nation is hurting. We're experiencing a painful time in our history. As an immigrant, when I speak to immigrant groups, I always remind them how lucky they are to be in America. That in America, the law and law enforcement are on the side of the people. That they exist to protect people and ensure their rights. I do believe that wholeheartedly. And I'm grateful for the many who work in law enforcement and who honorably protect our freedoms. But we're reminded over and over again that no system is perfect, and certainly, human beings are not perfect. So we must continue striving to do better. The tragic killing of George Floyd has shocked our conscience and laid bare an uncomfortable reality that there's more we must do to fulfill our nation's destiny as a beacon of hope and example for the world. I can't think of anything that should genize more than our shared humanity. We're called upon to unite around the ideals of fairness, freedom from fear, equality, and above all, justice for all people. These are ideals upon which our nation was founded, and these are the ideals that we must continue to strive for. Tonight's moment of silence is being dedicated in the memory of George Floyd and all those who have suffered in our suffering as a result of salt and justice. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. First on our agenda this evening, we have a public forum, which is a section for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda that are not associated with a public hearing. There will be an opportunity during public hearings for comments from the members of the public who wish to comment on the particular topic. If anyone is at home participating, would like to speak on an item that is related to a public hearing, there will be that opportunity to do so via electronic means. And you can submit those comments at any time between now and the time that the item comes up on the agenda. Okay. Did we receive any comments from the public for?
Yes, I do have one.
Yes.
This is from Chad Todd, 945 Valley View Drive.
Okay.
He wants to, he requests that you table the following fee increase until the city council meetings are open to the public and not by virtual meeting. The people of Marion should have a voice on tax and fee increases. So he mentioned ordinances 20-06, 20-07, and a resolution regarding the urban forest WIP.
Any other comments?
No, I don't have any others.
Okay. Then we'll proceed with the consent agenda. Councilmember Stern.
Your Honor, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A1 through 4F. This will be Resolution Number 28492 through 28504.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, including items A1 through F4 and Resolutions 28492 through 28504. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem for the next item.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention from voting and discussion as follows. Items A1 through F2, Resolutions 28505 through 28513.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention. Are there any items under there that you want to discuss or make any comments? Not all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries with one abstention.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28514, approving agreement with diligent corporation regarding meeting manager, video manager, board manager, public request tracker, and contract tracker in the amount of $18,900.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28514, approving the agreement with diligent corporation regarding the meeting manager, video manager, board manager, public request tracker, and contract tracker in the amount of $18,900. Discussion? Ms. Gudella?
Yeah, I would like to thank staff, guessing this is Rachel, who put this chart together because we were just talking about the desire to have something like this nearly two days ago. So, thank you. I think this is exactly what is needed to see dates and how it folds out and when it is. And also want to note that council received a letter from Frank Sherman, who normally regularly attends these in person. He's been regularly attending via the webinars. And he is a proponent of this as somebody who would get a lot of use out of it. I put a lot of stock into what Frank said because he is a regular, and I appreciated hearing from him in that manner. So for some really good anecdotes and arguments made Tuesday for this chart and from the public comment, I'll be supporting this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Jensen?
I'm also in support of it, but I think I was asking a question earlier, and I hadn't thought about it before I asked Rachel. I said, can you, are you able to do a word search? I mean, once we get all these meetings built into the archives, yes, you will be able to do a word search. I think that's going to be nice. I also talked to a couple of people about the possibility that they were going to, we were going to do this, and they certainly saw the benefit of being able to go in on any agenda or meeting and just maybe look at two or three items that they're interested in, not have to go through an hour and a half or two hours of that. The one aspect I would bring up, though, that we need to think a little bit more about, I did not see it in the timeline here. This is a very good timeline. I think that's going to certainly give us the roadmap on how to execute it. I think the other key thing is how to roll this out to the public and how to communicate this to the public that we have it and what do we have. So that's, I didn't see that in there. I think that's a key area on how to do that. So, but I'm completely in favor of the whole ball of wax.
Other comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I did want to address Grant's comment on Tuesday regarding the document storage. So there is, the contract states there's an extra fee if you use the document storage. I just wanted to clarify that that's if, so all meeting materials, which includes agendas, minutes, attachments, supplementary documentation, resolutions, ordinances, presentations, staff reports, and video, those, that's unlimited storage, so there's no cost for that. Anything on top of that would be an extra cost. However, we currently use Laserfish for those purposes, so we would not be using the document storage for anything non-meeting related. So there would not be any fee on top of the current contract.
That's, that's good news. Thank you for following up.
Thank you. Other comments or discussion on this item? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28514, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion for Resolution Number 28515, approving change order number one with Conference Technologies, Inc., regarding council chambers audiovisual equipment in the amount of $9,301.25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28515, approving change order number one with Conference Technologies, Inc., regarding council chambers audiovisual equipment in the amount of $9,301.25. Discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28515, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28516, approving 28-year agreement between City of Cedar Rapids, City of Hiawatha, Lynn County, City of Marion, and City of Robbins regarding Phase 1, 2, and 3, including segments A through G of the Tower Terrace Road Transportation Corridor Improvements.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28516, approving the 2080E agreement between the City of Cedar Rapids, City of Hiawatha, Lynn County, City of Marion, and the City of Robbins regarding Phases 1, 2, and 3, including segments A through G of the Tower Terrace Road Transportation Corridor Improvements. Discussion? Do you have a presentation, Lon, or?
Just a short summary again, that we went through this on Tuesday, but this agreement is to get us started on the environmental review for the Tower Terrace Corridor to help support the federal build grant application that was submitted in May.
Okay. Any questions for the city manager on that, or any discussion or input? Okay, then we'll vote. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28516, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28517, approving purchase agreement for property located at 2957 Highway 13 from Rick Ellison in the amount of $1,095,000.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28517, approving the purchase agreement for property located at 2957 Highway 13 from Rick Ellison in the amount of $1,095,000. I see our police chief is at the podium.
Fire chief, so fire.
She had a mask on. You know, you could tell.
It's red.
Excuse me, chief. I do know you're the fire chief.
First of all, I just want to apologize if this wasn't on the agenda for the work session on Tuesday. We did not make an agreement for purchase, really. We couldn't settle on a price 24 hours prior to when the agenda was to be out. So hence, we're getting it tonight because we'd really like to move on the project. We found some property that would satisfy our needs for Station 4 and 40 fire training facility. We've been two birds with one stone, I guess, in a way. I'm really excited about it. We went by it. My district, no, actually, my assistant chief went by the property one day and saw it was for sale. And he goes, "We've been training there already. Let's buy it and make our training facility." Yeah, and Station 4 is what I thought. And we did all the GIS mapping to make sure of the response times, how it would fit with Station 1, 2, and 3, and it fits to the T. With the, the study that was done in 2015, it's within a half mile of where that study showed it should be. So it's a perfect location. And as I said before, we've already trained there. Tri-State Towers has helped us with training for tower rescue and all kinds of high angle rope rescue. So we were pretty lucky. What's great about this deal also is that the city, you did budget it for $400,000 for the Station 4, for the land acquisition. As you can see, the price is more than that, but a request to the Marion Firefighters Association will help finish the payment. We're putting in six, yeah, I think it's six, $695,000. We'll pay for it, so.
Is that the request from maybe five, six years ago?
Don's vault.
Yeah. Okay. I remember there was a large request to the firefighters association. Okay.
Yes, it had to be used for a capital project, and we've always wanted to do it for a training facility to name after Don. He was on the department for 40 years. So this site is just fabulous. We toured it, we went through it, it will meet all our needs. And I can't say enough about it. I'm just so excited. So I'm hoping you will vote for the approval to go ahead with this purchase. You have any questions?
I'm sure there are questions. How large is the property?
6.25 acres. One of the good things about it also is that the property owner that is presently there does want to lease some of the property for the next five years. The part that he wants to lease would not be used by us anyway for our training, and he's willing to pay $109,000 per year for leasing that. There's also another building on this site that could possibly be leased until we are ready to put Station 4 there. So actually, by leasing the property, we will get a return on our investment. I think that's a win-win situation.
Could you just speak loosely to the timeline? So we're going to buy the land, so we secure it. When do you envision needing to build out the training facility in Station 4?
Actually, it will take very little to have to build out, which is great because the buildings are already there. But we will be using money from the Marion Firefighters Association for a lot of the training equipment. And the, as for Station 4, I don't see a need for Station 4 for at least another two to three, even five years. So.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes.
Did you have a question?
That answered my question right there.
Yep.
Yes.
How much do you think this is going to save versus building a station in two, three, five years?
The buildings that are there can be utilized to be Station 4.
Right, and so.
All it has to be is remodeled.
So were you thinking 10 million in five years to build? Well, no, if you were going to buy land and build.
We were going to build.
And not use this.
It would be satellite station, which would be about half the size of the station we're building now, so.
Could you speak into the microphone so that?
Yes. It would be about half the size of this station.
They're saving three, four million dollars on.
Actually, more.
Yeah, that's great.
Probably 10.
Easy decision.
Yeah.
Any additional questions or comments? Any thoughts on?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Oh, Steve. Chief.
Deb.
Thank you, Chief. Outfit, new uniform. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28517, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, at this time, I move to make the motion to direct staff to develop a city facility face mask policy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to develop a city facility face mask policy. Discussion? If you have any questions, if there are any. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. No questions? We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion to direct staff to develop a city facility face mask policy, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Harper?
Your Honor, I move to receive and file job, a job description for marketing and community relations specialist.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the motion to receive and file job description for marketing and community relations specialist. Discussion? Yes, Renee?
Just a question on the timeline of when we would weave this. Was this in the '21 budget? Or is this just anticipating future?
This is.
Your Honor?
This one is actually a change to an existing description. The library has a marketing and communications manager position, but as they get ready to move into their new facility, they're looking at how they're configured. And this is a specialist, which would not have supervisory authority, so it's actually a step below an existing job description. So the person that was in that position has left Marion to take another job, and the library wanted to be able to get this one approved so that they can move forward with recruitment. Holly Trinari is on the line, the library director, so she can add additional context.
Hey, did you have anything to add, Holly?
No, sir. Thank you, Lon. That's exactly right. We just downgraded from a manager to a specialist position.
Okay. Any questions for Holly or for Lon? Okay, thank you. We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion to receive and file the job description for the marketing and community relations specialist, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28518, amending the non-bargaining pay schedule to include the addition of the marketing and community relations specialists.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28515, amending non-bargaining pay schedule to include the addition of the marketing and community relations specialist. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number 28518, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Jensen?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 20-06, amending Chapter 105 of the solid waste ordinance and establishing a base monthly collection fees at $17.50, and this is the second consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to amend, to approve ordinance number 20-06, amending Chapter 105 of the solid waste ordinance and establishing base monthly collection fees at $17.50. Discussion? Ms. Gudella?
So is this one of the items that Chad Todd would ask us to defer until the public can come in?
This was one that he imagined, yes.
Yeah. So what would that do if we did table it? When do we anticipate opening? Do we have an idea of that? And how would this hold us back if we were to consider tabling it? I'm curious.
Ryan Miller is here, so he could address that.
In terms of when City Hall reopens to the general public, I can't answer that. That's something the city manager could speak to. I don't think there is a clear idea on when that's going to be. In terms of what it would do until you would have a public forum, this would impact fiscal year '21 budget. We'd probably lose revenues roughly between $24,000 to $40,000 altogether, depending on when that was implemented. So again, we don't know the timeframe when that would be approved, but there would be a financial impact.
Thank you. Maybe the city manager could chime in if he has any idea about timing for the second phase of it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman Gudella. We are watching the trends in viral activity per the guidelines that are presented by Lynn County Public Health. And so when they give us the all-clear and say that we're at the point where we can move into Phase 2, we have plans on how we're going to adapt to that, but we would not anticipate being open fully to the public until Phase 3 of the, of the response to the virus pandemic. So I would foresee that through June, the next series of city council meetings would be conducted this way, and there's a pretty strong likelihood that the first council meetings in July could be conducted this way as well.
Thank you. I guess the only other thing I would say on that then is, just to confirm, there will be one more reading at our next set of meetings, correct? So for Chad Todd and anyone else who wants to weigh in, I would just encourage you to send your comments to the city clerk so that we can hear those because I think that the arguments and all of the data that we've looked at for this and the other fees are, you know, I'm in favor of it. I don't want to impact our budget. I do want the citizens to be heard, and I appreciate the comment and the request, but there's still an opportunity to be heard, and so I would just urge you to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Could you read the comment again, Rachel? I mean, what was the basis for the request to table it?
He just said the people of Marion should have a voice on tax and fee increases and just to wait until the meetings are not held virtually.
Okay. I guess I would just make sure that he knows and everyone knows there is an opportunity to weigh in, even at the meeting electronically by sending a message. You could email the city clerk with comments that do get shared with the council. There's always the opportunity to call every council member, if you'd like, and talk about it with them. There are Saturday office hours, which have been by phone since the COVID crisis began. There are opportunities to weigh in, to discuss with the council members, not as a group all together in one room, but there are opportunities for people to weigh in and to make their, to give their comments, so. And Councilmember Gudella is correct, there is one more vote. This is not final vote on it. So there's still time, two weeks. Yes, Mr. Brent?
Would it be beneficial if the gentleman is listening to this recording or on the Zoom meeting right now, if Ryan maybe were to speak of why, real quick, recap why they're going up? Because they are, the fees are going up because of the cost, or these have increased. So it's not just to stockpile money for something in the future, it's just to cover the cost of doing this.
The proposed fee increase for solid waste for fiscal '21 is based on operating costs. One of the major operating costs we're going to see is an increase in the recycling tipping fees. And so right now, just to remind the council, we pay roughly, well, we do pay $40 per ton of solid waste that is landfill at the solid waste agency. Right now, we pay $85 per ton for recycle. It's anticipated when the contracts go out and are renewed in July with the solid waste agency, our recycling tippies will exceed $100 to $120 per ton. The reason why is that this stream recycling has lost all value within the marketplace. But that's one of the main reasons why the fee increases. And then lately, due to the COVID-19 situation, our volumes of solid waste have dramatically increased. We've seen a 20% to 30% increase in the amount of landfilling we're doing right now. What we're collecting from the general public, things like that. So our operational costs have really increased just within the past few months in addition to what we anticipated for the next year.
Is that sufficient? Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, as a city council, we've been talking about these issues and these details. Yeah, I think, you know, as the city council, we've been talking about these issues and these details since January and February when we worked on our budget. So we've been, the city council has been talking about this numerous times. And I know if Mr. Todd is shocked by it, it seems like a pretty big increase, but it's, we're not making a profit here. We are just trying to recoup the cost that's going on there. And so it would take a very, very significant number of people that would have to respond back to City Hall before I think we would even think about not doing it, because there's certainly, all the merit is there to support why we need to do it, regardless of what a lot of people may think about the increase.
And one thing to point out to the council and to the general public is that this will take our base fees to seventeen fifty per month. That's still one of the lowest fees within the state. Iowa probably is the lowest fee. The next highest would be City of Cedar Valley, I believe, that are at nineteen ten. But they're scheduled to increase as well, and then I would say you'd believe that that range in there is going to increase as well. So we're a good two dollars under other similar services.
And the cost for this is a hundred percent from the fees, there's no property tax, money from property taxes.
Everything that's operated on the solid waste operations is all off the solid waste fees. There are no property taxes that are put into that. Additionally, those fees do support general fund expenditures such as financing people that do work within that fund to balance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Yes, go ahead.
Lately, I've been talking about want versus need, and I've been scaling back and a little more conservative. And I would definitely see this as a need, this isn't a luxury, this is solid waste and recycling, and it's got to go somewhere, so it's, we just need to pay them bill. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number twenty dash zero six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty dash zero seven, amending chapter ninety-nine of the sanitary sewer ordinance, increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from three dollars and eighty cents to four dollars and ten cents, and establishing new construction sanitary sewer connection fee at two thousand dollars. Second consideration.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty dash zero seven, amending chapter ninety-nine of the sanitary sewer ordinance, increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from three dollars and eighty cents to four dollars and ten cents, and establishing new construction sanitary sewer connection fee at two thousand dollars. This is the second consideration. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think your comments from the prior item hold true with this one. There's multiple channels for us to receive commentary, and I think that's very critical on these items. And so I would really encourage everybody that's participating today or would participate at a future session to provide us comments in the virtual mode that we're operating in. I do just want to say, and I think it's somewhat applicable to the prior item, I have a little bit of, I carry a little pessimism relative to if we have a midsummer resurgence of our COVID situation, what that then would cause us naturally to try to do as a city. So I'm just worried that we may end up in an extension of operating virtually that, you know, may ultimately become a permanent impediment to tackling issues like this. So I'm just sensitive to that.
Yes, Mr. Gudela.
I would ask Mr. Miller to come back and speak to this, just so that Mr. Todd and anyone else listening has, you know, all three of these are in a row, so he can have the explanation on this, and so he doesn't have to go back to Tuesday or the prior meetings. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Miller explaining.
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Miller to come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, and so the proposed sanitary sewer connection fee increases under this ordinance are somewhat twofold. Number one, we are proposing an increase in what we call the domestic user fees, that's based on your usage. We're proposing to go from three eighty to four ten per domestic user fee. And essentially what that is, that's one hundred cubic feet, or that equals out to about seven hundred and forty-eight gallons of water or effluent. That's mainly associated with the treatment charges that we get from the City of Cedar Rapids. That's under our current treatment agreement. The second proposed fee is a, what we call a new capacity fee for new construction. Here is a copy of our, our, what our fees look like right now. Right now, we pay what we call a monthly capacity charge. Oh, you're fine. A monthly capacity charge, that's just over one hundred sixteen thousand dollars. Then we, and that pays for essentially our population use of the plant. And so when we, when we, our population grows within the city, our need to utilize a plant grows as well. And we pay what we call an operations and maintenance charge, that's essentially what it costs to treat our sewer or our effluent down at the wastewater pollution control facility at the City of Cedar Rapids. So right now, our total monthly charges are at seventy-two forty-five, as proposed. On the next slide, we are, we'd like to stay consistent with the metro area, the City of Cedar Rapids, City of Iowa, and the City of Robbins. For all new construction, they have what they call a new construction fee. And this will essentially pay for additional capacity that we will need at the wastewater treatment facility. And so that's the goal of this new connection fee. And then if you could get one more slide, this will bring us to the treatment parameters that we need be at under the recommended standards of wastewater treatment practices. For a new construction dwelling, single-family dwelling, it spells out that an average of two hundred and eighty gallons of effluent per dwelling unit per day would be programmed under that fee charge, so.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number twenty dash zero seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five one nine, approving an increase in the urban forest utility fee from two dollars and twenty-five cents to three dollars effective July first, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five one nine, approving an increase of the urban forest utility fee from two dollars and twenty-five cents to three dollars effective July first, two thousand and twenty. Discussion? Would you like Seth to address that?
Thank you.
Seth or Mike with this?
Yes, I'm here, sorry, I'm keeping my video off, my connection's not the best right now. Your Honor and Council, so this is a fund that helps the, our Division Urban Forestry Utility Division in accomplishing a lot of the goals. One of those major goals is dealing with the Emerald Ash Floor. We have thousands of ash trees over the next few years that will be dying and will become a liability to the city. And so it's going to be important for us to help manage those ash trees. Currently, over the past decade, this fee, this fund has been built up to where it has been and has been able to support the division, not just in operations, but also in its capital assets, including the building out there at Alaw to support the bucket truck and a lot of the equipment used by urban forestry. This increase is to help stabilize that fund. If, without the increase, we would have to rely on other revenue sources such as general fund to help support it. So right now, this is a fee that's completely supported for the division.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, council members? We'll vote. All those in favor of resolution number two eight five one nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five two zero, approving the contract and bond with Midwest Concrete Incorporated regarding the two thousand and twenty fire station number two parking lot reconstruction project in the amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five two zero, approving the contract and bond with Midwest Concrete Inc. regarding the two thousand and twenty fire station number two parking lot reconstruction project in the total amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-four cents. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two eight five two zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the Grand Avenue spur north on existing trail to north side of Marion Boulevard Bridge over Indian Creek, PCC Trail, C Mar Phase Two. This encompasses resolutions two eight five two one through two eight five two three.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the Grand Avenue spur north on existing trail to the north side of Marion Boulevard Bridge over Indian Creek. This is part of the C Mar Phase Two Trail Project. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion? This includes resolutions two eight five two one through two eight five two three. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five two four, approving twenty-eight E agreement with Lynn County regarding the two thousand and twenty HMA resurfacing project to improve Seacrest Road.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five two four, approving the twenty-eight E agreement with Lynn County regarding the two thousand and twenty HMA resurfacing project to improve Seacrest Road. This is for the county to assist in their share of the cost of paving that road. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two eight five two four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five two five, approving twenty-eight E agreement with Lynn County regarding bridge inspections for FHWA Bridge two two one three nine O, and this is over Lucor Road over Indian Creek.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five two four, approving, I'm sorry, two eight five two five, approving the two thousand and eighty agreement with Lynn County regarding bridge inspection for the bridge at Lucor Road over Indian Creek. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight five two five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five two six, approving agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the intersection improvements at South Thirty-first Street and Highway one hundred.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five two six, approving the agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the intersection improvements at South Thirty-first Street and Highway one hundred. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight five two six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five two seven, approving agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the intersection improvements at Albernett Road and Echo Hill Road.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five two seven, approving the agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the intersection improvements at Albernett Road and Echo Hill Road. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two eight five two seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Just your name?
Your Honor, I move to direct staff to solicit engineering services for the intersection improvements at Albernett Road and Echo Hill Road.
Second.
All, it has been moved and seconded to approve the motion directing staff to solicit engineering services for the intersection improvements at Albernett Road and Echo Hill Road. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Mr. Harper?
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five two eight, approving agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for intersection improvements at Seventh Avenue and Thirty-fifth Street.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five two eight, approving the agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the intersection improvements at Seventh Avenue and Thirty-fifth Street. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two eight five two eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve project calendar regarding building division fee schedules as follows. Resolutions two eight five two nine through two eight five three two.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding building division fee schedules, including resolutions two eight five two nine through two eight five three two. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve resolutions two eight five two nine through two eight five three two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding the sale of portions of the east-west alley located between First and Second Avenues and Ninth and Tenth Streets. We'll open the public hearing, we'll ask for presentation from the Community Development Department, and then we'll take comments from the public. If there are any members of the public who are joining us by electronic means, this is the time to send in your questions via the electronic means. We have Mr. Trey Hart here.
Yes, so as indicated on the, on the slide, the applicant has requested to vacate portions of the alley. We did that at the last city council meeting, I believe, and this is the action in a public hearing regarding the actual sale of a portion of the alleyway. As you can see, the area that's being proposed to be sold is highlighted in red in this.
Okay. If there are any members of the public who have comments either for or against this measure, this is the time to present those comments. Have we received any comments either outside this meeting or during this meeting?
Not for this item, no.
Mr. Trey Hart, have you received any comments outside this meeting?
No, we have not.
We'll just wait just a little bit, make sure that any comments that are in process have come through, if there are any. None? Okay, we will close the public hearing.
And- Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five three three, approving the sale of a portion of the former east-west alley located between First and Second Avenues and Ninth and Tenth Streets adjacent to one seventy-six Tenth Street, Marion, Iowa. Brandon Sheerbaum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five three three, approving the sale of a portion of the former east-west alley between First and Second Avenues and Ninth and Tenth Streets adjacent to one hundred and seventy-six Tenth Street. The sale is to Brandon Sheerbaum. Discussion? Okay, we will ask for a roll call- Okay, we will ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Cadellia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution two eight five three three has been approved. This time, we have another public hearing regarding sale of portions of the north-south alley located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues and Twenty-sixth and Twenty-seventh Streets. The public hearing is now open. Once again, if there are members of the public who want to weigh in on this topic, please send in your comments at this time while we have our presentation by Mr. Trey Harn.
Yes, your honor, as indicated, this is a public hearing regarding the sale of portions of an alleyway located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues and Twenty-sixth and Twenty-seventh Street. As you can see in the overhead, there's a, this is a longer alleyway than was proposed in the last slide. A number of folks have been contacted regarding the proposed vacation and the sale. You can see by the listing that some folks have chose not to respond at all. Others have chose with the desire to acquire a portion of the alleyway, and some have asked to acquire both their portion and the portion that would extend to their neighbor's property. On Tuesday, there was a discussion and two comments came out of Tuesday. The way the value of the alleys are apportioned is it's the average assessed value of the land only, thirty-five percent of the average assessed value. So we were talking about that on Tuesday, and I think that's important, just so everybody does know that. So we go through and we take all the ground adjacent to the alley, we add it all together and then average it out to determine that per square foot value. Then, and I think it is important just to point out the process because it says no response, and I guess the next question would be, what does no response mean? So when we go through this process, we generally are contacted by a neighbor that wants a portion of the alleyway. And so we sit down and say, listen, we like to go through a process and try to vacate and sell all portions of the alley just for ease, and that way, when we're doing this, we do it all at once. As you can see, there's a number of resolutions approving the sales. We do one public hearing and the process is smoother. That doesn't necessarily mean everybody chooses to respond or participate. But we do try to get the applicant to make as many contacts as he can. When the process does come forward, in which we start with the vacating the alleyway, we send a notice to the property owner, we post a sign at the alleyway, and then we do a notice of a public hearing in the paper. And so there's a number of notice touchpoints with each individual property owner during that process, and that's just at the planning commission. And then we come to the city council meeting, and we do that all again for the vacation. So the notice, the posting, the property, the public hearing, and such. Well, once it's vacated, when we go through the vacation process, then we do the, for the sale, we go through, and then we send another correspondence to the individual property owners requesting with a pre-stamped envelope in which they can return a card that basically says, I'm interested, I'm not interested in the property. And that's the response that we work off of. We give them two weeks to respond to that postcard, and then we would proceed with those that are interested in acquiring a property. So there are a lot of touchpoints along the way. It's not a physical contact. We don't go out and sit down with property owners. We don't, a lot of times, you can't even find somebody's phone number these days. So it's not like we make that level of contact when we figure there's a lot of touchpoints that occur via the mail prior to that. So that's where you see some of the differences. Some people just choose not to respond at all. And that's, that makes it difficult for everybody because then you're always worried that somebody's going to call in six months later and say, well, I wanted my five E. Now, we did have someone on this one that did call in, I believe it was early as even this week, and they said, hey, I want to make sure that I get this taken care of. So they, we will, and I think it was in the staff report, we'll be adding that one to the next agenda for the sale of their portion of property. So anyway, I wanted to, I know that was a lot of conversation, but just want to make sure that everybody understands that we do. We do try to do what we can to reach out to these folks. These are pretty labor-intensive projects for a very limited return investment, but it is good to get them back on the tax trail. So I hope that explains everything and more that you probably really wanted to know.
Thank you for the thorough discussion. Okay, have we received any comments from the public?
I have not.
Okay, and have you received, your department received comments outside this meeting?
No, we have not.
Okay, please note that for the record, and we will close the public hearing. Mr. Brandt?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five three four, approving the sale of a portion of the former north-south alley located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenue and Twenty-sixth and Twenty-seventh Street adjacent to ten-sixty, Twenty-seventh Street, Marion, Iowa, Mitchell Sutton.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five three four, approving the sale of a portion of the former north-south alley located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues and Twenty-sixth and Twenty-seventh Streets adjacent to ten-sixty, Twenty-seventh Street, Marion, Iowa, to Mitchell Sutton. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight five three four, please say aye.
Excuse me, your honor.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a roll call vote.
That's right.
Yes, and it's written right on my agenda, roll call vote.
Thanks.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Cadellia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five three five, approving the sale of a portion of the former north-south alley located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues and Twenty-sixth and Twenty-seventh Streets adjacent to ten-seventy, Twenty-seventh Street, Marion, Iowa, on behalf of Michael Schaefer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five three five, approving the sale of a portion of the former north-south alley between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues and Twenty-sixth and Twenty-seventh Streets adjacent to ten-seventy, Twenty-seventh Street, to Michael Schaefer. Discussion? Okay, we'll proceed to vote the roll call votes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Cadellia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Mr. Sternet?
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight five three six, approving the sale of a portion of the former north alley located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues, Twenty-sixth and Twenty-seventh Streets adjacent to ten-eighty, Twenty-seventh Street, Marion, Iowa. This will be Nathan and Heather Sitzma.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight five three six, approving the sale of a portion of the former north-south alley located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues and Twenty-sixth and Twenty-seventh Streets that's adjacent to ten-eighty, Twenty-seventh Street, to Nathan and Heather Sitzma. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two eight five three six?
Roll call.
Yes, roll call, please. Thank you.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Cadellia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Motion is approved. I will turn over the meeting to the mayor, Pro Tim.
Okay, at this time, we have a public hearing regarding an amendment to the future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from single-family detached residential to multifamily residential for Bowman Woods Seventh Edition, Marion, Iowa. And the public hearing is now open, and we'll let Tom give us an update and presentation. And at this time, again, as in the past, if there are any comments from the public, please send them in at this time.
Yeah, so the public hearing tonight is related to the future, an amendment to the future land use map of the City of Marion's comprehensive plan. The area that's identified in the, in the red is the, is the entire parcel that's being discussed this evening. The portion that, the east portion of which would be Albernett Road extended is where the comprehensive plan amendment would fall. As was discussed on Tuesday at the work session, and the council's been, received a lengthy staff report on this, the request is for a future land use map amendment. At this point, it is, it's not a rezoning request. When the property was rezoned, it was rezoned to P D R, and there were densities identified within that P D R within the site plan, and the site plan was, would then be approved. And it was approved for single-family homes. What we're seeing now is a change to that site plan that would provide for multifamily homes. And so therefore, in order to move that site planning process through, which requires, which would require to be reviewed, we have to amend the comp plan. So it is, it's a little bit different. If we were rezoning from P D R to R four or something like that, that we would, there would be three readings of the ordinance and such. So tonight's really the public hearing on the comprehensive plan amendment. That being said, I think, I think everybody's aware of, I think that might be the technical side of what we're, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of it. Usually, when we do rezoning, there's a re-reading situation. This is a comp plan amendment, so it's a done-by resolution. There still is a public hearing, and I think all of the discussion that we'll have is pertinent, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the difference between the comp plan amendment and the rezoning request. So when it's rezoned to planned development, we look at the preliminary site development plan and then the final site development plan, and we approve it kind of independently of the zoning, but it still has to fall back to the comp. That being said, there are other items related to the comp plan amendment on the agenda, but I want to just kind of walk through the rationale for the comprehensive plan amendment relative to the units and the change in density. I think that's the real, I think everybody, that's what everybody wants to know more about, is it was single-family, now it's multifamily. What was the density before? What's it moving to now? And what's the rational basis for that? So in a conversation to move this forward, when we look at multifamily uses, multifamily residential is intended to be used as a transitional product between non-residential and single-family residential uses, as well as along major arterials and major, per the Marion Transportation Plan, the comp plan, and other major streets, like Albernett Road is an extension. That will be the major north-south traffic carrier through the community. The project is being proposed, we located east of Albernett Road. And so there is a little bit of a division between what is proposed or what is single-family and what is multifamily. It is kind of tucked in beside a natural area. We do and feel that there would be some negative impacts associated with larger families and single-family homes adjacent to electrical substations, which I think was also discussed on Tuesday. So it may be a good place for some higher density, probably lower number of families involved adjacent to that electrical substation. So that was some of the consideration that was discussed internally, and just so there's some knowledge of that. Now, what I wanted to point out, and I think if we go to the next slide, I may have misspoke a little bit on Tuesday. Try the next slide. I wanted to bring forward one more, maybe. Sorry, I don't have the slides in front of me. One more. And again. This is, sorry, this is the overall preliminary plat. Now, you can see that we're, can't really point to it either, but we're only about half built out on this plat. The area that is under consideration is in the lower right-hand corner where there's a little bulb that's identified with some larger single-family homes or lots. If you look to the west, I think on Tuesday, I indicated that the property on the west side of Albernett was proposed to be single-family residential. It is actually proposed to be duplex condominium or townhome style development on the west side of Albernett Road. So I did misspeak in that regard, and I want to make sure that that's clarified. If you go to the next slide, I think there's a more zeroed in. So the property that we are talking about today would essentially be east of the north-south road, which is Albernett, and that area that's a bulb, that would be re, the site plan would show that as a, as the building footprint of the multifamily units. To the west, I know it's not the easiest to see, but you can see there's some footprints of some duplexes on, on larger individual lots in that area. So I want to make sure that there is, so there is a little bit of a buffer between the single-family to the north and west. You come down towards Albernett Road, you're going to have some duplexes, and then as you cross Albernett Road, you're going to, you're going to be, you're going to be into the area that's being proposed for multifamily uses. So that's, that's really kind of the background on where we've been and how we're, where we're going to. I know there have been some comments, I think we received, and Rachel, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there were two.
We've received several in the chat as well, but we have several comments.
Okay, okay. So I know we received two correspondence via email, and some of the concerns were with regard to densities, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, we addressed that certainly. And I know Dave and, Dave Hockett and Nicole and the office have been responding to folks today from the perspective of questions on the actual densities and what they are. I think you received a letter, an email that, in which someone was indicating there were a hundred and eighty units being proposed. It's eighty units, not a hundred. So the density being proposed is eleven-point-eight-three-eight units per acre, and the surrounding areas is about three-point-four units per acre, and that's including the other portions of basically Bowman Meadows First through Fifth Editions. So there, you know, obviously, it's going to be an increase in density when you go to the units as proposed, as everybody's seen. And move, I don't know if the council wants to stop here and talk to the issues, or if you want me to just to cover the preliminary site development plans and preliminary plat and move that forward. I can talk to the preliminary site development plan if you like.
Why don't you go through all of your comments, and then we'll come back to some of the other comments that have been sent in?
Okay. That being said, can we go back to the site development plan? I think it's the one that shows the proposed multifamily units on a, there you go. So as proposed, they move, moving away from the single-family homes to the proposed preliminary site development plan. As indicated, there's eight buildings with ten units in them a piece, proposed to be situated north-south and extending between Albernett Road and towards the natural area just south of the substation. There were some concerns with parking. Each unit is, does have a two-stall garage with a drive in front of it, so there's essentially the two-stall garage and then two cars in front. So there is off-street parking. Now, if some person does have a large gathering, they're, they'll probably have to figure out how to park in the area or along the north or south drives, but that's, they're definitely parked within code. And I think if you, if you recall, some of the development that we've done out east of thirteen in a similar manner, where they're parked the same way, just so the council's aware. There's been some discussion and concern for traffic. Albernett Road's being designed to handle, handle traffic in and out, or handle traffic in an arterial fashion, so we're confident that the roadway will be able to handle the increased traffic. And it is anticipated to be, to increase once it is connected to Seventh Avenue, obviously, and I hope the folks in the neighborhood are aware of that connection into the future because it's certainly been on the horizon for many, many years and in the plans. We do have two accesses in and out to handle some of the traffic to ensure that there's not a lot of backup traffic during peak hour, and also to provide appropriate fire code. As I had indicated on Tuesday, some of the site development plan does lie within the flood. I said the floodway, I meant the flood plain on Tuesday. I do apologize for that as well. It is in the floodway, or I'm sorry, the flood plain. So this is a preliminary site development plan. When they move to final, we'll have all of the details worked out on exactly what that elevation is. There's a lot of costs that goes into that. This project's not an immediate project, and so they wanted to just get the property in line before folks in the neighborhood are built out, and this would come at a future date, so they want to kind of let everybody know what's being proposed. So that's, that's really, that's really what the city staff likes to see because the worst thing you can do is see a whole neighborhood develop out in accordance with an overall plan and then change the plan at the end. So that's certainly. So that's certainly not something we want to see. So this is a, a good way to get the preliminary plan in place. And as, I'm sure as time goes by, if this happens next year, two years or three years, you would see that final development plan in which they'd invest more of the, and do more of the detailed engineering to, to create that situation. They have indicated if it's, if it doesn't come out, then they'd have to remove buildings and readjust the site plan. So that being said, the, that, that really covers the, the change in the preliminary site development plan. There's also the preliminary plat on the agenda. And the preliminary plat, we, it, it accounts for all the stormwater that's necessary. And I think all the details of that were outlined in the staff report. With that, I think I'd probably stop. I've talked a while. Can you take any questions that you may have?
Well, city council will hold up on their questions. Let's go to the comments that we have received from the public, either from your department or that Rachel has received. Tom, you want to start with any comments you've received and responses?
So I think I covered the, the density question and the concerns of the density. So I, I believe in the, the memo that was outlined, there was a question on that. Floodplain issue, which I outlined in the report too, is that there'd be more detailed analysis with the final site development plan. Parking, I tried to cover that in my staff report that I just gave. And then the traffic as well. And that, those were the comments. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have it right here. Apologize, I just have the response.
I mean, I have several comments, so I'm not sure who you're.
You want to go ahead and read what they asked?
Sure. Carrie Grimes. I've read through the application, have a few comments and concerns. First, when I purchased my home in Bowman Meadows in 2018, I researched the surrounding area and what type of housing existed and what type was for future builds. I passed on another home in Marion due to its location near apartments. I feel the value of my home will be adversely affected by a change from single-family residential units to apartments. I think if the proposal was to build condos or townhouses, the negative effect on surrounding properties would not be so significant. Second, the application states that the density would change from 3.5 units to 12 units per acre. However, I, when I do the math, the proposed density is 18.4 units. This is a significant change in density. Are the school's water, are the school's road, water system and sewer system able to handle such a large increase? And third, I'm concerned about the parking or lack thereof. There are no parking spaces for guests, and there are no on-street parking within the proposed development. So those were the concerns. I, I, I would like to speak to one comment within this if the council would like.
Please go.
From, from the city perspective, and when we review a proposal, I think it's important to note that we look at densities, multifamily, single-family, the, 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 the number of units and such. But the way that the building is structured, whether it's a condo, an apartment, or owned or occupied or, or, or not, that is not something that comes into play with any development proposal. I think folks would be surprised to understand how many actual apartment buildings are condos, because there's a tax benefit to doing it that way. So I, I, I think that to get at the heart of that, I think, is the desire to have him be owned and not rented. But that is not something that's under the purview, and we review as a part of any kind of the developer proposal. We would, we would get ourselves in a little bit of trouble with regard to that review process. I think, did you guys feel that I covered the parking and the transportation and the density on that? I do believe that this is, there may have been a conversation with Ms. Grimes, this was Carrie Grimes, that, that spoke to the density, because I had a couple emails on the conversation and how they figured it differently. Did the council receive this?
No, I was going to read them. Sure. This one is from Terry Shiflett, 823 Bow Hunter Drive. I agree with the growth and development of Marion and understand the need for tax revenue, but I have some concerns for this project. It is important to be transparent since our neighborhood is part of Bowman Meadows. People have already purchased a home in Bowman Meadows, had an understanding that this was supposed to be single dwelling homes. If flooding is a concern and basements cannot be put in, then we should take a close look at the overall flood concern for these apartments. I've lived in this area for 60 years, and I have seen this surrounding area flood and into the park area, displacing the tenants of these apartments as well as the damages. The original plan was approved for a 3.5 per acre, but this plan would increase it to 18 per acre. This is quite an increase in density. Albernett Road was to help the flow of traffic. Most two-bedroom apartments would have two vehicles. This would increase vehicles, 80 units to 80 to 160 going on and off Albernett Road in this area. Parking in this area is a problem and should be looked at now rather than later. The two spots outside the garage are not enough. What about holidays, birthday parties, Hawkeye games? No extra parking. This would promote grass parking, which there is very little of, or across the street in our neighborhood. I am proposing that council revise the plan from eight units of 10 to six units of 10. This would decrease the density just slightly on Albernett Road. Remove the two buildings on the south end. That would be at greater risk of flooding and put in extra parking. The parking would not be affected if there was flooding. This allows for more parking for tenants, delivery, moving trucks and service vehicles.
And I, in reading, I'm looking at an email that, so Nicole Barron's in our, in the planning department received the, this correspondence and replied in, in detail. And I think I outlined most of the responses, that the, the difference in density calculations. I think Nicole walked through that with them. I think I addressed the flood, floodplain issue, and that in the event that that floodplain issue could not be remedied at the time of final, they would have to revise something. Some buildings would potentially have to be dropped. They're meeting the parking standards, so really don't, from the perspective of parking, they're meeting the standards that are in place. And then traffic on Albernett, there were concerns over the increased traffic. And we, that was addressed through the, from access perspective. We got two, two entrances in and two entrances out.
Yeah, any others?
Yeah.
This is the one.
There should be another one. This is from Dennis and Kathy Becker at 810 Flight Drive. The comment is that it seems to be an odd place for high-density housing, given that it is in a flood zone and will basically sit in the middle of existing single-family homes. It doesn't appear to me that Marion is starved for land, so I wonder why this project wouldn't fit better somewhere else. I do feel if Scogman is involved, that the project will be done well. By the information online, it appears the project meets all the criteria laid out by the subdivision regulations, but I feel the density doesn't quite fit in that location. And then I can go through the other comments I received.
Please go ahead.
This is from John White, homeowner at 797 Bow Hunter Drive. Would like to recommend not approving the amendment to the future land use map. Personally feel that adding multifamily residential would change the quiet nature of the area and would cause current homeowners to want to leave. I have heard from people in the neighborhood expressing their dissatisfaction with this amendment and would not like it to be approved. Bowman Meadows is traditionally seen as a quiet neighborhood, where it is nice to raise a family. And inserting a multifamily addition would add a significant amount of people to the neighborhood and would cause it to lose some of its appeal. Another comment from Tracy and Brandy Allen. We recently learned of this and disagree with it based on the limited information available thus far. Our family moved into the neighborhood less than four years ago and wouldn't have purchased the property if this option had been disclosed. Before this is considered, those who will be directly impacted should be advised of the plan. Until then, this should receive no further consideration. Another comment from Ashley Messerly at 809 Bow Hunter Drive. She is against this change. There is not enough parking. When she bought her home, it was supposed to be single-family homes. Huge congestion of traffic from 80 units of apartment instead of 14 homes. The flood zone also needs to be taken into consideration. And then the west side is still single-family homes at this point, but they're asking to rezone one that as well. And then she asks what the timeline is. And then another comment, it just says Kurt, I don't have a last name. Seems a traffic survey should be done prior to approval of this if an apartment complex is going in there. Also, homeowners in the area should at least have a say, as will most likely impact home value. Another comment, it just says anonymous. He was notified of this at five o'clock today by a neighbor. Received nothing in the mail. Live in Bowman Meadows neighborhood and I'm not for this. Is this to be low-income housing? And then asked, Boyson Road between C Avenue and Albernett Road is already highly congested. Are there plans to correct this prior to this happening? Another comment, I am a resident of Bowman Meadows, and I do not support the rezoning and oppose passing the resolutions. I have concerns adding the multifamily homes will lower my property values. And then we do have Hunter Scogman as a panelist. I think he's with the developer, and he wants to speak as well.
Can I respond? I, one thing I do want to point out, and I, as, as the council's aware, and I'm sure is Planning Commission was aware as well, when it comes to notifications, we, we can never notify enough. And so whenever we draw the line, it's always not far enough. And, and I, we're, we're working on a more technological way to do notifications. And so that's something that we're hoping to, to, to be able to do into the future. However, I do, I do want to point out that we were required by code to notify within 250 feet. We always do 300, no matter what. So this is the original, the, the property is actually a ways away from any existing developments. So after Planning Commission, we had some conversation and some folks, and, you know, they'd just seen the signs. We had a very similar one where I wasn't notified. So Carol, if you could go to the next slide, please. We did go out and we went 750, I believe the 750 feet is where we went to. And so we, we know, you can see we did significantly more notification between the planning, or between Planning Commission and City Council. So we did, we did not do the whole neighborhood. We, we just, I mean, we got to base it on something, so that's, that's where we went. I, I can, I could understand if someone that's just on one side of the street who wasn't within the notification, is their, their neighbor says something, clearly there's going to be, well, why wasn't I notified? This is why. We just, we go off a buffering of the property. We generally only go 300 feet, but we went out even further on this one, just, just between Planning Commission, City Council, just so we would have more input. So I hope, there certainly wasn't the desire to not inform folks. We went way, you know, ahead and tried to inform others. And so that's just, I just, we were prepared for that slide. So I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Rachel, you indicated Mr. Scogman has some comments?
Yes, he should be.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate it. I just have a few comments to make. So as I mentioned to P&amp;Z a few weeks ago, so the start of this project is really probably two to four years away. But we, but we really want to start the rezoning process early for two reasons. First, so there won't be any surprises to city staff or council about our intentions. And secondly, we wanted to be really transparent about our plans to the surrounding neighborhoods. The houses surrounding this plat are homes that we, meaning Scogman, will build and customers we, we will represent. So we have a vested interest in making sure this is, project's integrity is upheld and it won't negatively affect the area. Our, our studies indicate there is actually a need for more market rate rental units in Marion. The goal for these units would actually be in the 1,200 to 1,400 per month range. So I know there's a lot of concern about the price point of these. So it's actually not too dissimilar from my house payments that most homeowners pay. So we don't foresee it affecting values at all. In fact, it may enhance them. And this particular area does not lend itself very well to single-family units for, for several reasons. First, the alliance substation is nearby, not very appealing for homeowners. Second, the floodplain is close. And although we won't be, we'll be living outside of it, we think it's best not to have basements. And third, the high traffic of Albernett Road. There's also some sanitary sewer depth issues, which would be difficult to resolve if we had units with basements. Given Albernett is a collector street and will be fairly busy, as Tom mentioned, we don't anticipate a significant effect on traffic from this, from this area. And this, this particular apartment design has been a very popular concept throughout the Midwest. And given the location and proximity to Rockwell and downtown Marion, it should be a prime site for higher-end rentals. And in terms of the overall design, we have a variety of elevations, as you saw, with one color of concept. But the goal would be to have three or four other combinations designed by our architect as we move forward. So it should, it should be varying designs and color combinations throughout each building. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does that take care of all of the comments?
I've had a few more come in.
Go ahead and read them, please.
This, what, he commented earlier, it's Joseph Fielder at 952 Archer Drive. He had some further comments. He purchased his house in May 2019 and specifically selected a lot for the view of Boyson Park. I paid a premium for this location. The proposed resolution will place multi-homes across the street from the front of my house, which would decrease property value. I oppose this item. Sarah Zalinska at 770 Archer Drive. She just states she's not in favor, they would not have built here if they knew that this was a possibility. That's all I have right now.
So we have heard all of the com, public comments for and against? Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I will say there are several people attending that are raising their hand, and you'll have to enter your comments in the Q and A area. I don't know if you want to wait a few minutes.
Yeah, we've had quite a few comments, so we'll just give it another, another minute. Usually we don't have too many public comments during public forums, so this is kind of new territory, getting multitude of comments. Are there any more coming in?
They're, they're asking if we can turn on the audio for them, so we would have to allow them to speak and then mute them. Otherwise, I'll, I can ask that they just enter their questions.
Well, I would look at it from the standpoint, are there any other, any people taught, wanting to talk that are comments different than those that we have received or covered already? Because the other thing I think we want to do is, is take into consideration if, if they're repeating the comments and they've already been made, those are already documented and heard by the city council. So are there any individuals that have any, that are different than any other names that you have not heard from?
I just have Jason Stone with Holland Hall, who can speak to some of the issues raised. Tom?
Let's listen to what he has to say. Is he online?
Hello, can you hear me?
Jason, go ahead.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to bring up a couple more issues, kind of reiterate a little bit what Hunter Scogman also addressed. But basically, the, the use of this property we're proposing is, is multifamily. It's a, is due partly because of the collector's street. The collector's street, once it's punched through to seventh, will at some point carry a high volume of traffic. So it's kind of a buffer zone between the Bowman Meadows subdivision and then this multifamily. There won't be any driveways off of this. There'll just be two access points proposed. There's been a lot of questions that have been raised about the level of traffic that this site will generate. In our analysis, there's about 45 vehicles per hour is what is anticipated. Albernett is, is designed to, will be designed to carry that amount of traffic that the site will generate. And just for perspective, the, we looked at turn lanes out of the site, if they would be required or not. Typically, once you reach 100 vehicles per hour, a turn lane is required. We're well below that threshold. This is, just to kind of point out how the level of traffic that this site will actually produce. Being that it's next to the substation, it's kind of, it's kind of a transition between the single-family with Albernett, the collector. And then the multifamily, then to get to the, to the substation, if this, if this was proposed as a single-family, I think it'd be a little more difficult to sell these units to try to provide that transition through the collector. And then the last point I just wanted to bring up was the flood plain. As they mentioned that, once we get into the, into the plan of improvements for this project, we'll look at the flood plain and how the site will impact that. We'll either perform an analysis on the creek to see if the elevations are going to be raised or if they'll, if they won't be impacted much. If so, well, at that time, I think we'll determine whether or not we want to adjust our site plan to either move our, move some of the buildings away from the flood plain or revise it completely and eliminate a building. Those are the issues I just wanted to bring up. I just wanted to, if there's any other questions I can address that have come up, I'm here to ask, to answer some of them.
Thank you, Jason. Rachel, have we received any other comments?
Yes, they're, they're just asking questions, so I don't know whether to...
This is not a dialogue for them to ask questions. We've got, they can make public comment. We've received a numerous number of public comments and they are not allowed to ask questions at this time.
Okay, then we have nothing else.
Okay. With that, we will close, we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28537 recommending approval of the amendment to the future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from Single Family Detached Residential to Multifamily for Bowman Woods, Bowman Meadows Seventh Edition in Marion, Iowa, Midwest Development Company.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28537 related to the change in the comprehensive plan for Bowman Meadows Seventh Edition. And now we'll open it up for questions and discussion by the City Council. Go ahead, Renee.
Thank you. So I'm just going to continue on from my Tuesday, just to reiterate, I still feel the same way. I feel that, first of all, I want to say that I appreciate staff going above and beyond what's required for noticing. I know that's always tricky because you have to stop somewhere, but I do feel like, you know, there's an ordinance, we followed it, we doubled it, we've done more than that. So thank you, staff, for trying to be as inclusive as possible. I don't agree with the amendment to the future land use map, however, for a few reasons. The first is which is the current comprehensive plan that we've been operating on, I believe is decades old. And we're underway of updating that comprehensive plan. That was something that I ran on that was totally needed. And so in the current one, as well as the new one, we've designated that area as single-family. And I think we've done that for a reason. It's intentional. And I think that I don't want developers to drive the jigsaw puzzle kind of changes that happen. I want the city to drive where our growth is. So I don't want to veer from that plan because we haven't seen over the last decades that multifamily or a higher density should be in that area. I also think that what is being proposed at the price point doesn't meet our housing stock needs. So it's not like we're making an amendment to accommodate something that has been identified. I know we need some, some more very low end and maybe even some more very top tier. But I feel like what's being provided doesn't address what Marion actually needs in that sense. The, the issue on the safety and the substation, you know, so the comment was made that we don't want to put single-family homes by the substation, but it doesn't matter what you live in, humans are humans. And so I don't understand how that's even an argument that apartment people should live near a substation versus single-family home. So I don't feel like that is anything that we should be discussing. And then, you know, a lot of people who have been chiming in, and those are the people that did get the notice, I'm sure a lot more would say it. Some of that area is really new and there are a lot of new homes there and people do research and they do their due diligence when they purchase their home. And, you know, for us to kind of change what's going in right near someone or what their view would be for someone who recently bought homes, I think that that's not a fair thing either. So for that, that variety of reasons, I'll be voting no on the series related to this item. Thank you.
Anybody else? Will, go ahead.
Just to clarify, because I've heard two different things this evening, Tom, are these, were these originally single-family lots there or were they multifamily condo lots there?
Tom, can you come up, please? So they can hear you online? Okay, so if you go ahead and repeat your question, Will, now that Tom is up here.
Were they originally to be single-family lots or condominiums there?
Single-family, to the west of Albern, up to the west of Albernett were duplex condominiums.
The west are duplex, which would be very similar to these style-wise.
No, the duplexes are...
Oh, not townhomes, I'm sorry.
Gotcha. So they're the two units side by side.
Ranch units, yeah.
Yep, yep, yep.
The section, the area we're talking about was originally single-family.
Correct, yes.
Okay, Randy?
Could I ask you and Carol to go back to that line drawing there? I'd like to, I have a few questions on that. I've heard two. I'm a little confused. Are these rental units or are these owned units? I've, I've heard anything from $1,200 a month rentals and I've heard them being singly owned. Can you clarify again? Are we talking about rentals or?
My, it is my understanding they would be rentals.
Okay, they are rentals. So this would be, you know, I see the pencil drawings. I understand snow removal, the retention ponds. So we would be looking at, we, there would need to be garbage collectors in there, yet snow removal, I'm assuming would be privately handled. This is going to be in and out on a major thoroughway. I live in this particular area. I'm more displeased every day as people find new traffic habits, cutting through neighborhoods, avoiding stop signs, stoplights. Again, too, it, it seems like as property gets developed out and the less desirable property gets kind of wound down, it seems as if there were always asking for exceptions to throw in condominiums or something else that will give us more of the return on money, so to speak. I as well will not be in favor of this amendment moving forward either. Thank you.
Okay, Grant, go ahead.
So I have just two residual questions and then I will make a comment about how I view this. First, I think it was just stated and Tom confirmed for me, there are duplexes that would be to the west of Albernett Road. Okay. And then what kind of visual buffering is being provided for this site?
My exercise tonight. I was hoping that we could zoom in a little bit. I know this is a difficult format in which to illustrate, but you can see, I guess, kind of along the Albernett Road portion, there's a landscape buffer along the front. Part between the sidewalk and the, there you go. It's a landscape buffer is being provided with trees and bushes and shrubs.
Okay.
Sorry, can I, but that's still to be determined.
That would all come through on the final site development plan. Correct. So you, and just so everybody's aware, this would come back through the council. Just so there's, you would see a final.
Okay. Thank you. So I think this is an incremental step to really deciding what happens in this location. I've expressed at both planning and zoning and work session, a little concern that I have about proximity to flood plain. I understand that additional analysis of those conditions for the waterway and potential adjustments of reducing the footprint of the overall development would be considered if, if there can't be an effective, I guess mitigation for any negative impacts on the flood, flood plain. And I also express concerns relative to just the fact that there is the large transmission sub that's sitting in there with the transmission lines ingress and egress immediately to the east of this property. I somewhat a different opinion. I don't know that those facilities are attractive for single-home development, but I certainly think that that needs to be contemplated. I for one would like to see further analysis for this site to be done, inclusive of floodwater, inclusive of traffic impacts, so that we have greater clarity going forward. And so at least for this consideration, I would vote in favor of it. But solely from the standpoint of this is a step along a path.
Could you bring one screen up for me? So to the west side, Tom, there are duplexes in the plat onto the west side of Albernett across from this addition, is that correct? So what do we consider the density of that area compared to what we're asking about for the density of this seventh edition? And how many, is it, and how many, what, what part of that area is duplexes? I'm not clear on that either. That's all right.
So does the mouse show up on the...
Yes.
So this area here, you can see they've got the duplex footprints outlined on, on the plat. This is the area that's, that would have the duplex. They are larger lots, but they have two units per lot. I, I don't have necessarily the density. We did get a comment from Holland Hall, Lauren Hoffman representing Holland Hall, indicated that this area was originally identified. We've, we've said single-family, that was my understanding, but they've identified that there's an intention for duplexes. I just want to relay the information that they put forth. I would have to I'd have to see my files to understand whether that, but it's not that I don't believe them. It's just that, as I look at the plat, you can see that they're, we outlined the duplexes on this and they weren't on the east side. So I'd have to go back and do some due diligence on how that was approved, but...
Yeah, that's why I'm surprised to see duplexes on the west side. And now we're talking, and there was originally single-family on the east side here. And that's the, that's the challenge I have about all this. I can understand some of the comments about the people saying, hey, this is a huge surprise to me. If it were a bunch of duplexes across the road instead of this higher density, and you already got duplexes on one side of the road, putting duplexes on the other side, to me would say, hey, you've already accepted them on one site, even if you built your house there six months ago. If you look at a comp plan, you know you've got duplexes there and putting more duplexes on the other side, I would certainly find acceptable. But I think for people, I think people need to have a reliance on looking at, at comp plans. If they're going to buy a house, they need to know what's going on in that area. So I think there is certainly validity to look at for that. So I think my concern is, if they want to look at some other option, that'd be fine, but I think they're throwing a curveball to everybody in that area. So I think people need to be able to rely upon the comp plan. And I go back to Renee's comment from Tuesday, we need to get that comp plan coming out so that people that are throughout the city are buying and building know what in the heck is going to be happening around them. So. Okay, all right. So we've got a motion and a second for Resolution Number 28537. Are there any more questions or comments by the City Council? All right.
Your Honor, this is legal. Given the electronic nature of the meeting and the fact that several council members going into this vote have already indicated that they are going to vote no, I'm going to strongly recommend that this particular vote be a roll call vote because it's not going to be unanimous yes, like most of the votes are.
That's fine. It's been recommended that we do a roll call vote for Resolution Number 28537. Rachel, please do the roll call.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Cadalia?
No.
Mr. Sternan?
No.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Jensen?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, Resolution 28537 has failed. So that would probably mean that we do not need to discuss the next two resolution numbers, 28538 and 28539. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. All right. With that, we will move on to the next public hearing. So we've got a public hearing regarding an amendment to the Marion Enterprise Center Design Guidelines. This is from Medco Holding Company LLC. The public hearing is now open. That hurts my knuckles every time I do that. But let's go ahead and give us an update on that, Tom.
Yes, as, as, as the council's been briefed, the following is a public hearing, essentially requesting that some tier-one lots out at the Marion Enterprise Center be readjusted in the, in the overall development plan out there within the planned development districts to go to tier-two. So the, on the northeast portion of the property, there's a desire to take those to the tier-two use, which provides for a little bit heavier use of the property of the MEC. And it's, the request is coming in from Medco Holding Company. I would point out that in this area, we do have pretty extensive design standards. And any of the site plans that come forward from this area do go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council. And I believe that Nick Glue, representing the Medco Holding Company, was going to answer any questions as well. And I think he's available.
Okay, Nick, do you have any comments that you want to provide to the City Council?
Did you want to go ahead and jump into the public hearing, Mr. Jensen? Okay, Nick Glue, President of Medco Holding Company. I think the memo that I included in the, in the council pack... in the, in the council packet really, really summarizes our position on the request. This is actually a request that our Board of Directors has been contemplating for the last year, as we've taken a look at really the type of building inventory that, that we believe has been lacking in our community. And one of those types of projects is a project that, while it's not specifically tied to this request, is a project that we're working on, that we do hope to bring forward in the next couple of months, which, again, as Tom had mentioned, would be subject to a full review of our design guidelines. And those types of projects are kind of a flexible, multi-tenant or single-use type of office warehouse type of building. It's, it's a product that has been very popular across the metro, and we believe is best suited for tier-two use, and specifically for the type of lots that Lot 14 and 15 provide. Again, you'll recall that we do have no build areas on the eastern backs of these lots that can't be built on as far as a vertical structure is concerned, but are perfect for rear-loading docks, rear overhead doors, and flexible usages as such. So tier-two has been the type of ground that has been most popular through, throughout the development. Actually, as you look at most of the properties out there, not just El Plas that's built in tier-two, or Speedy that's built into your tier-two, but actually legacy manufacturing that was built in tier-three ground is actually tier-two standard. So this request really doesn't have anything to do with what we believe to be the, the quality of the building that will be constructed on these lots, but more or less to really just pick up that warehouse usage that, that tier-two provides for that tier-one does not. And just as a sidebar, we're not losing track on our, our tier-one ground. I think in the memo that I provided, I showed you some of the work that we have been doing to try and move forward some tier-one development out in this particular area. So we are, we remain committed to trying to figure out a way to get some traction on that, on that tier-one use. But when you think about Lot 14 and 15, we're really starting to get back deeper into the park. They don't really have the visibility that some of our tier-one usages would, would expect, and therefore, we're, we're confident and, and have really been thoughtful in bringing this request forward to, to move these, just these two lots from tier-one to tier-two. And after the public hearing or now, I'm happy to answer any other questions that the council might have.
Okay, is everybody on the City Council aware which two lots we're talking about? 14, 15, in the upper right-hand corner? Okay. All right. Are there any other, Tom or Rachel, have you received any other comments outside of this meeting or during the meeting?
I have not.
Okay. All right, public hearing will now be closed, so now we'll move on to the resolution.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28540, approving an amendment to the Marion Enterprise Center design guidelines on behalf of Medco Holding Company LLC.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28540. Any comments or questions? I know there were a few questions Tuesday regarding this. Have those been answered and all cleared up? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving resolution number 28540, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution 28540 is approved, and the meeting will be passed back to the mayor. Thank you.
A final item on the agenda before council comments is a public forum, at which time members of the public may address the council on any item, whether on or not on the agenda. Have you received any comments outside the meeting?
I do have one. It's from Charlie Knutson.
Yes.
283524th Avenue.
Yes.
Looking at the map shared at a recent council meeting regarding the Sixth Avenue, 19th Street to East End Roundabout, it looks like the map shows an intent to extend 22nd Street from Sixth Avenue to Seventh Avenue. If, if that's correct, when will this occur and what effect will this have on the present quality auto business? I did already forward this comment to Mike Barcalo, and he has responded to Charlie, so...
Okay, thanks for doing that. Any other comments received during the meeting?
No.
Again, we would encourage people with questions to contact council members via email, phone call. You can also meet with the appropriate distancing measures. These meetings aren't the only time that members of the public can weigh in on things. So, and we do appreciate the interaction and comments from the public to inform our decision-making, so thank you. Nothing else on the agenda, we'll proceed to council comments. We'll start with Ms. Cadella.
Okay, two things. One, I would just ask, and I would hope that council would agree, that we would no longer read any comments from anonymous. I feel like if someone's not going to put their name on something, they don't get time, basically. So I don't know if we can make that a policy, if it needs to be, but I don't believe in that.
Well, I think it's always our policy that we have to have the name and address of the people who address the council.
Unfortunately, with Zoom, we can't, I mean, I'd have to, yeah.
It's an unusual time, but that, that is our policy, and we just, we would encourage anyone who wants to make a comment to the council, whether it's by, sometimes I receive notes that are not signed, and it's hard to address them or to deal with the issue if the person hasn't signed it, so, and it's the same concept here, you know? If it's a legitimate concern and comment, we should be able to own it and put our name on it and have it properly addressed.
And then, the other thing I would say is, just to thank you for your comments at the opening of the meeting, Mayor, I really couldn't say anything better, I wanted to acknowledge it as well, but I think that was very eloquent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harper?
Just a quick follow-up to my comments from 30 minutes ago regarding these virtual proceedings. I would just hope that we think about ways to optimize any community, citizen interactions through the Zoom process. I don't know if there's anything else that we can facilitate for instructions to help them understand how to get comments to us. I am somewhat thinking that at some point, we'll have to go, once we return to normal operations, I also expect we'll have to return to a virtual mode, and I just think to try to optimize what we're doing now in any way possible will be to the benefit of the citizens, so...
Okay, thank you. Will? Okay. Colette?
Couple of things. First, I think there's going to be some baseball out at Prospect Meadows this weekend, so we're excited about that. My son was out there working today, getting those fields ready, so I can't wait, actually. Right, I know. Maybe he's out there, learning a lesson about hard work, perhaps. Secondly, I have been thinking about this for a little while, and I just really want to thank the mayor for his comments today, they were really important, I think, for all of us, and, and the chief's comments that came out early on. Just a small statement I feel, I think is important that I share with you today, it's really been weighing on my mind about George, George Floyd's death, and not knowing what to do next, right, but knowing that I need to take the time to listen and to learn, and I'm doing that, so I'm going to find ways to use my voice. I'm just not sure how to do that yet, and I'm sorry that it took another black man's death for me to purposely think about it like I have, so I'll do better. I'm proud of my community at Marion, love this community, and it's just really important that, that we find a way to invite all of our people to have the same passion for their community and their fellow residents. So I know I'm not the only one to think about this recently, but just really appreciate my, my peers and my colleagues for giving me a moment to reflect on thinking about what can I do with my voice, so thank you.
Randy?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll reiterate what Council member Atkins said about Prospect Meadows. I mean, it's not only great for baseball lovers, it's great for our community. I think they're hoping that at least half, half of their initially projected teams, traveling teams come, as well as the local play, you know, it's all great, and, and so we will hopefully have people coming to Marion, staying in Marion, supporting our businesses, and seeing what this, what this city is all about, you know? So be ready to welcome people, welcome visitors, and show them our city. It's great that Sunrise Yoga will be returning to Lau Park for the months of June, July, and August. The farmer's market is in full swing in a, in a modified form. The Upton Market, there are plans for that, again, also in a modified form. It's really great to finally see progress on the Tommaso's building. I think just having that, that hole filled, finally, it's been there for, for several years, I think, I'm sure the businesses around it are very appreciative and excited, it's just good, it's good for, for all of us to see that progress. We have a new business in Uptown in the middle of all of this, if you haven't visited the Uptown Coffee Company. And there's, there's good progress all around. We heard on Tuesday that we're ahead by more than 300 building permits from this time last year, which I think is a surprise to a lot of us, but that's a good sign. And you can drive around town, see construction projects, you see progress. It doesn't mean that there aren't needs, and that there aren't people who are suffering. I think everybody's affected in one way or another by the crisis, and so we need to keep a eye out for that, to come together as a community, really, you know, our, our theme for the recovery process and for this entire year is building community with unity highlighted in that word, and we need to put that to action, and it speaks for the, the, the events that are going on with, with the killing of George Floyd. It speaks to everything, you know, we need to come together as a community to help each other, to build trust with each other, to build community, and to help each other through this, these difficult times that our, our city and our nation are experiencing. Little report out on the, on the task force, the recovery task force that we formed, we have now met three times. We are meeting every other week. We, the way it's, it's structured is there is a steering committee, and then there are about 15 people that report to the steering committee from all different sectors. There's no funding, it's an ad hoc committee that I have formed, it's, there's no funding or city money being applied to it. It's basically a recommending body to, to make sure that we're covering things that need to be covered and helping people through the crisis. To date, we have put out a community readiness survey to see how ready people are to come back out into the businesses, to go back to some sort of normal life and doing the things that they enjoy doing. There should be a press release coming out, I believe, tomorrow on the results of that survey, it's now been closed. We put out a pretty comprehensive business guide to reopening, which addressed almost nearly every type of business and sector on, with, with guidelines on how to safely reopen and get back in the business. So that's being referred to by the businesses. We are working on a list of mental health resources in the area, a comprehensive list to put out into the community so that people, people and businesses, because a lot of businesses are concerned about the health of their workers, the mental health, including the physical health. So we're putting out this comprehensive list of mental health resources for people to refer to. We're starting to look at food insecurity now that the schools are closed and not serving the meals. In their last week of serving meals, Lynnmar alone served 17,000, more than 17,000 meals. So we're wondering what's going to happen now that those are over. There, there is the summer meals program, but I, I don't think it feeds nearly as many kids, and so we're looking at that, food insecurity, housing insecurity. Now that the stay on foreclosures and evictions has been lifted by the governor, what is that going to do? There's, we heard a statistic or a prediction that county-wide, there would be 3,000 foreclosures. So that's a prediction. So we're looking at all those issues, how we can address those, if there are resources or ways we can put people together with resources. We have the Director of Marion Care is coming to our next meeting to talk to us about the issues that she anticipates, and the issues that she and her team are seeing in the community, and in the groups that they serve in the community as far as needs, and especially housing and food insecurity. So those are some of the things we're working on, we're always open to suggestions, please send me your, your ideas. If you see something or notice something in, in the community that needs to be looked at or addressed, I know others have, and I appreciate that, this is a group effort. There could be lots of great ideas, none of them will work unless we all do our part and we all do it together. So with that, thank you all for being with us in this meeting. The meeting's adjourned.